We're going to call the Tuesday, January 12th work session to order. Before we get going, if anyone's got any agenda, we are going to move item E to discussion on Edgewater Brownfield Development under, and move that to C after the discussion of Filer Township Utility Agreement. So we're just going to change up the order a little bit. So are there any public comments before we get going tonight? Sinan, and the first item on our agenda is a discussion on the Filer Township Utility
Good evening. As you're aware, staff has been working for quite some time with Filer Township to come to an agreement between the two entities, and we're really close right now. So tonight, we just kind of wanted to walk you through some of the highlights and give you a broad perspective of what the agreement entails. Essentially, Filer Township would like to build their own wastewater collection system within their downtown development district. They intend to design, finance, construct, and own that collection system. And it's roughly bordered from north to south by Stronach Road to the south, which is about where the BP gas station is, and then all the way up to the city limits at 12th Street where Family Fair is. And then east and west, it goes roughly a block, if you will, where their businesses are located. Wade Trim is their engineer. They have not done a final design on the project yet, but there have been previous preliminary designs that have been crafted. So overall, they believe that the entire system will be gravity with the exception of one pump station that would be located generally around the Kmart complex. Their intention is to break ground and have this system operating in 2016. Some of the project details, the city of Manistee would treat Filer as a bulk customer. And what that means is that because they're building and owning the collection system, each individual customer will be a customer to Filer Township. And then Filer Township will be our single customer. So we've treated them, or plan to treat them as a bulk customer. Today, we have several businesses within the township that are tied to our sewer system, and they generate about 5,000 gallons per day. With the additional construction and the additional businesses that would be tied into it, we believe that they would add about 25,000 gallons per day of additional sewer usage. The collection system would have one single point of connection to the city and is likely to be located at the intersection of 12th Street and Cosiasco. This agreement does limit them to that one single connection, but if something happens in the future where an additional one is required or desired, then that can be, that portion of the contract could be opened up and discussed. At that collection point, there would be a chamber where all the flows would be metered, and typically that's called a partial flume. It's the same type of structure that we have at the wastewater treatment plant where we're able to measure flows. And it's essentially a channel that we put, put all the liquid through, and then it's measured in depth in the flow rate so that we can accurately measure that. As I mentioned, primarily a gravity system with one pump station. Under the agreement, the draft agreement, the city would be contracted for the operation and maintenance of the system by the township. In the bulk rate that we've established for this system, the maintenance would be a port, would be a portion of that. The tasks that we would perform would mirror almost identical of what we do within our existing system. It would be responding to any type of backups. We would do inspections on the collection system, on the gravity portion of it. The pump station requires a little bit more maintenance, but those would be checked weekly, cleaned as appropriate. Excuse me. At the bulk rate, that 30,000 gallons of flow through the new system would generate approximately $22,000 in new revenue to the water and sewer system. That's in addition to the actual consumption charges. And then, in the agreement, we've addressed what happens when major components fail. So what happens if a pipe collapses, or a pump goes out at the pump station, or the control panel gets hit by lightning? And so our exposure is limited to $10,000 in a single event per year. So anything that would happen up to that dollar amount, we would just cover under our normal maintenance and under our operating budgets. And then anything that could happen that's larger than that would be paid for by the township. And they would establish a reserve fund so that those monies would be available in case that happened. A component of the agreement that's very important to us is the industrial pretreatment program. Essentially, what this does, what that program does, is it sets limits and it monitors what each individual customer puts into the sewer system. Today, we've got an IPP program, and we keep that updated. Filer would adopt materially identical language as our IPP program in the township. The city would assist them so that if we found that flows were coming in that were jeopardizing our treatment process, we would help track them and identify where those are at. Any notifications or violations would be notified and addressed specifically to the township, and we would work with the township to remedy that case. That's going to go over some of the economic details of the agreement.
So as drafted, the agreement contemplates to be 40 years in length, which is pretty standard for this type of an agreement. And it provides security on both sides and peace of mind that the sewer is going to be there. As Jeff mentioned, Filer would be a bulk customer for the city. We intend on billing Filer quarterly. Filer, of course, would be billing their own customers, so we would just be sending out four bills a year, and that bill's payable within 45 days by Filer. And Jeff mentioned the flume meter at the point of entry. That's really the cash register for the system. And so that is required in the agreement to be calibrated at least annually, but the city can also calibrate it anytime if they think that there's a problem. So that's kind of the highlights of that. In the agreement, there's a connection fee, and then there's also guaranteed capacity for Filer Township. The rate study that we had done by Burnham and Associates established a bulk rate connection fee at $8 per gallon of capacity. In the draft agreement, we guarantee that we will accommodate and treat up to 125,000 gallons per day of wastewater from the township. Based on that $8 per gallon of capacity, that would imply a connection fee of $1 million. We estimate that once the flow, Filer's connected, it'd be about 30,000 gallons per day. And through negotiations, we arrived at a figure of $400,000 for the connection fee. And this is one of the items that went back and forth, back and forth, back and forth quite a bit. That is equivalent to about 50,000 gallons per day. And we feel that Filer would probably have to develop more sewers to exceed that 50,000 gallons per day. That would be like a 67% increase in their commercial district from what they're doing now. So even though we're in essence discounting the fee that they would typically pay based on the rate study, we don't think that they're ever really going to probably get to that point. And so we thought that that $400,000 was a fair, fair cost. And like I said, there was a lot of negotiations and discussion about that. Filer can pay that in a lump sum or over, up to a 10-year period at a 4% interest rate. And it's really important to point that Filer has no ownership interest in the city plant, and they cannot sign, assign, or sell any of their capacities. So the capacity that they're not using is available for city treatment if needed. The rate structure, again, Burnham and Associates did a supplemental bulk rate calculation for Filer. When we originally started these discussions, they had intended for them to be treated as retail customers of the city, but that changed and morphed as the negotiations went on. And so they wanted to be treated as a bulk rate customer, so we calculated that rate. It's roughly 117% of the in-city rates, and it's comprised of three different components. One is the sewer rate of $8.08 per 1,000 gallons. One is a ready-to-serve charge, which is basically converted to a per 1,000 gallons, because you can't have a ready-to-serve charge if you're not serving the individual customers. And then, as Jeff mentioned, the operation and maintenance charge of $2, which results in a rate of $10.83 per 1,000. That rate is going to be locked in until June 30 of 2017, and then for the next two years, there'd be a 3% rate increase. And then after that, the same as the city customers. And there's also a dispute resolution mechanism on those rates. And again, those were arrived at through negotiations. But they're, they're fair, I think, and they're reasonable. It helps us to get the deal done, which is really important to the city. For existing city customers, and we have a number of those in Filer Township, they have a choice. One would be to stay with their existing contract, which lets them pay the in-city rates, but they pay a payment in due taxes. Or they can choose to be treated as a bulk customer. If they choose to be a bulk customer, the pill would phase out over three years. And that ability for them to opt out would be subject to making sure they pay any prior pill payment and also for proper notification. The timeline, right now, the agreement's being finalized. There's one last point that the attorneys are working on, which is a franchise for city customers that are currently located in Filer. If it's not part of this agreement, it can be done at a later time. We have existing customers that are in Filer, but there's, we can't locate a franchise, so that will have to be addressed one way or the other. And it's likely that this agreement will be in front of the city in Filer in February. I wasn't able to determine whether or not they put it on their agenda for the January. I tried to get ahold of the city, or the township clerk, but she wasn't available. But I think it's probably going to be in February is more like, most likely. So that's all we have for our presentation. If there's any questions, Jeff or I could answer them. Interim city manager, Ben Difos, is also here if there's any questions.
Thanks.
I have a couple of questions. Jeff, you mentioned that they'd like to be operating in 2016. Is that, what, their collection system? Is that connecting to our system? Or is it collection and runoff? What is the idea to be connected to them in 2016 with their sewer, their, the, is it the Storm Run, Storm, Storm Sewer?
This is all sanitary sewer.
All sanitary sewer, okay.
All sanitary sewer. So my understanding, and my understanding is that they have all their financing lined up. There's certainly additional steps. Once this agreement is approved by the township and the city, then it allows them to proceed with the rest of their work on the financing and repayment side of it, as well as the design. But what they've conveyed to us is that they would like to have that under construction in 2016 and operational.
Okay. And then the idea for the lift station at the corner of 12th and Cosiasco, isn't that where like the Morton pipeline is going through? Is there any concerns where that location will be?
One clarification, the pump station would likely be down
Over by Kmart.
Over by Kmart. The chamber, well, with the preliminary drawings that they have, shows the pipeline running parallel to the Morton pipelines. Morton has, Morton has a track of land that used to be railroad grade, and it runs through the Family Fair property. It actually bisects two parcels. So the concept there was, to my understanding, was to, for the township to gain an easement on the portion to the southeast and run parallel to the Morton property, but not occupy the Morton property. And my, my, my understanding of the discussions have been that if Family Fair were to give up their, or opt out of their pill payment, their existing contract, there's substantial savings to that and gives them motivation to grant that easement in that pathway. And then there would be room for the chamber for us to measure and meter outside of the intersection at 12th and Cosiasco.
And one last question about the, one time, are the maintenance of the event, an event with an emergency collapsed pipe, as you said, $10,000 the city would maintain. And then on top of that, the township would be responsible for those, and they're setting up a reserve fund. Is there any guidelines around that reserve fund? Do they have a dedicated amount that they need to have? And is that a concern that we should have with them? I mean, collectively, we're working us together. So, you know, my thought, is there kind of some guidelines that go into that?
Yeah, the, the base guidelines around that are the largest, the most expensive single component that's likely to fail or need to be replaced is a, is a pump. Those pumps are $68,000, depending on how big they are. So this really covers the event that if a pump fails, the city's going to, the city's going to take action to have it replaced and have it repaired. When you, when you get a copy of the draft agreement, there's quite a bit more detail on how, how much the township sets aside. And I believe it caps it at around $50,000. So at $50,000 in their reserve, then they're not required to add to that unless it's drawn down, and then there's a mechanism to bring it back up.
Okay. That's good. I'm getting a collaborative agreement. That's, that's great, because you never know what's going to happen. I think the last one, no, it was all. That's good. Thank you.
It appears that starting July 1st, 2017, they're going to deposit, we're going to, they're going to give us $5,000, and we're going to hold that? Is that the way that I understand it?
Are we escrow that, or is the township?
No, we escrow it.
We will escrow that, correct.
Right. Now we just hold that, and anything over $10,000, and then we take out.
Actual run of that, Jeff, is from the BP station to, is it just down the corridor at 31?
It mainly runs down that corridor, and then there's some branches off at Murky Road, 28th Street, where else. You know, it would go back to serve the VFW, the fire department likely, so stretch back to Nelson Street, at Murky Road. It would extend back to serve Walgreens, the auto repair shop, and then probably, it actually is Maywood right-of-way that extends, but isn't approved there. That would bring in the stores like Continental Rental, Ace Hardware, and some of those.
Jeff?
Go ahead.
Is there any upfront cost to the city?
Other than our attorney's fees, I don't believe there is anything.
How far back from the road on 31 is this pipeline going to be?
The final design has not been done, so I can't really answer how, how far it's offset from the roadway itself. Is that what your question was?
Yes. Yeah. There's, there's property for sale down there, and I'm just curious and wondering if it's going to be, how far it's going to be away, if it's going to cut into a parking lot, or what's going to have to be excavated.
My understanding, well, after looking at the preliminary designs, all of the, I believe all of the main that the township would construct would be within the right-of-ways. There may be some temporary grading easements for deeper portions, but I believe that all their system would be within public right-of-way.
Any questions?
I just want to say thank you, your efforts, Ben, the team at Filer, Ed. You know, this has been a long, long, long overdue collaboration, and hopefully a step in the right direction between the city and the township to move us forward in a positive economic and, you know, collaborative effort. So I can't tell you how much I appreciate your efforts and Ben's, and again, the city of Filer Township. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for allowing the discussion on Edgewater Brownfield Development.
I'm going to go over the, the project for the North Washington, or South Washington area redevelopment that we've been working on for quite some time. John Bertheis, one of the owners, wasn't able to make it up. He was planning on coming, but with the weather being so bad, he opted not to come up. And he was only going to be doing the first part of this presentation anyway, so I'll be able to run that through. The main reason we're running through this at this time is that a lot of things are starting to move on this project now. And there's a number of members of council that haven't really seen many of the details of this. So we're going to kind of run through it from top to bottom, and just know that there'll be other things coming back in front of council here soon. Okay, so just a little background. The River Park Place building was acquired in 2010, and the North Channel Outlet building was acquired in 2013 by the developer. They also acquired some adjacent properties that wrap around the building from the, on the north side and the west side. There was some redevelopment interest by the MEDC in 2011, and then there's been lots of discussions with the city, DDA, and state in June of 2012. Environmental due diligence started in early 2014, and there was some planning done with the city, DDA, and state at that time as well. If you look at this map, the parcels in question are the, on the north side of the river channel from 31 all the way to Maple Street, which is city-owned property, is part of the redevelopment area. And we'll talk more about that in a little bit. And then the two parcels that the building's actually set on, the parcel that wraps around them to the north and a little bit to the west, and then the city-owned parcel along the river there down at the lower left, which is where the sewer's going to be. So there's six parcels total. This is a picture of the River Park Place building. You can kind of see it's, you know, been there for a while. It's, it's starting to deteriorate. It has deteriorated quite a bit, actually. There's the North Channel Outlet. Everybody's familiar with that. What is the proposed project? It's important to note that in order for the project of this scope and magnitude and complexity, that it's got to be a partnership between the developer, the city, and the state. And that's how it's been designed from day one. And the project cannot and will not proceed without that partnership. There's going to be quite a bit of private investment in the River Park Place. They'll be residential. The North Channel Outlet's going to be commercial and residential. And the developer has secured financing through Westshore Bank, and Steve Brower from Westshore Bank, and he's also a member of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, is here. So they've got that, they've got the commitments for that. And then there's also public infrastructure improvements to support the project, utilities, as well as some street improvements. And there's state financial support that will be granted through the Brownfield and some other things, such as a grant, which we'll talk about. This is a picture of the old Manistee Manufacturing Company that sits on the site of both River Park and the North Channel Outlet. This is looking north. Obviously, the first part of that building there is no longer, that's been demolished, but it's kind of an interesting and gives you some perspective on what used to be there. Here's a rendering of the River Park unit. The intention is to have up to 20 residential units. And in the current building, there's some garages, which would serve as office space, and also some open parking. And that is, needs to go in front of the planning commission for PUD approval. You can see, these are some pictures of the interior and the exterior of the River Park Place. As you can see, there's quite a bit of deterioration that's occurred since the previous owner abandoned it. You've got broken windows, animals have been in the building, you've got mold, you've got some rot. So there's a lot of work and stabilization and remediation that needs to be done in the building. For the other part of the project, there's 21,000 square feet on .4 acres. This is for North Channel Outlet. The first floor is intended to be retail and commercial. The second floor are going to be apartments, which is 80% of the area median income, and probably with some Michra Health there, we'll talk about that. And the third floor would be market-rate apartments. There'll be parking on the west and north, and also some landscaped space on the north side of that. Here's some pictures of inside the North Channel Outlet. Again, it used to be a furniture manufacturing factory. There's, there's contamination in the building that needs to be dealt with, and there are some structural issues that need to be dealt with. But it's, it's got a unique history, and it's a fairly interesting project. So what are some of the onsite development activities that have to happen? First of all, you've got interior and exterior building demolition and removal in order to get it, where they can work on it. Building structural reinforcement, particularly in the North Channel Outlet, there's some sagging that has to be taken care of, and some, some foundation forming up. Removal of any contaminated soils and materials. Capping exterior contaminated soils, abatement of some asbestos and lead-based paint, and site grading and balancing. And so the estimated cost of the remediation activities on-site redevelopment is about $564,000. And then there's public infrastructure improvements that are needed to support the development and are eligible for being reimbursed by TIF capture. The sanitary sewer replacement, which we've talked about, stretching from Sixth Avenue over to the bridge, the Sixth Avenue Pump Station. Wastewater pump station upgrade, water main extension to service the facility, because there isn't one currently. Stabilizing Short Street, which, that was intended to be a public city cost, but in negotiations with the developer, that's going to be paid for by the developer, but reimbursed through TIF to make the project work on the timelines that need to happen. It'll be designed by the city, however. Memorial Drive resurfacing down the road a little bit. Washington and Fifth Avenue area streetscape, possibly some Veterans Memorial Park improvements. And the estimated cost of all of this public infrastructure is about $2.5 million. Again, here's some pictures. You can see that's Short Street and the existing retaining wall that will need to be replaced and rebuilt. And then just kind of looking down at maybe some of where the streetscape may be, as well as, as I mentioned, the biggest piece of the public infrastructure is the Riverbank sewer line. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about the project financial information. The River Park redevelopment cost is about $2.6 million. And these are all approximate numbers. Things change as, you know, inflation goes in, but they do have bids. The developer has bids on most of this, and these are fairly firm costs. North Channel Outlet redevelopment cost will be about $2.8 million, and the public infrastructure improvement's about $2.5 million. So you're looking at over $8 million of the total investment in this project, which is a very big number for the city of Manistee. The current taxable value of the privately-owned parcels is about $343,000, and the current annual taxes are about $20,000. In the future, the estimated taxable value is going to be about $2.65 million, and the annual tax is about $170,000, really being fully collected. We're going to run through each of these particular areas of the project. Each of these is an aspect of the project. And so you can see, it's quite a lengthy list, but all of these pieces need to fit together like a jigsaw puzzle to make the project work. So this slide will be repeated, and we'll highlight which section we're going to talk about. So the first part's going to be the Brownfield Plan. Again, these are the parcels that we talked about, the six parcels basically along the river that are part of the Brownfield So the Brownfield Plan was approved by the DDA and the BRA back in August of 2014, so what, a year and a half ago, and council in October of 2014. So that was really the first step to get this project going from a city perspective. Again, there's eligible properties, six of them. River Park Place is considered a facility under the Brownfield Act. It's blighted, and it's also functionally obsolete. The North Channel Outlet, three parcels, is also a facility. It's blighted, it's functionally obsolete, and it's also a historical resource, because as we said, it used to be a factory. And the city parcels are contiguous to parcels that qualify as a facility, so they can also be included under the Brownfield Act. The eligible activities and expenses, for environmental, it's about $167,000, and for non-environmental, just under $3 million. And then the BRA can capture an administration fee, which is estimated to be about $100,000 over 30 years. And that's allowed by the Act and allows the BRA to function and continue to do projects. So Brownfield Plan, we're going to keep talking about that a little bit. It's a 30-year tax capture. That's what the plan calls for. That's what was approved by the BRA and city council. And there is intended to, come back to council, request for an obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, abatement of 10 years for the North Channel Outlet, which would be a real property tax abatement, not on the real estate itself. Originally, there had been discussion about doing neighborhood enterprise zone tax abatement on the River Park Place property, but through the course of discussion with the developer and negotiation on the development agreement, that's not going to be pursued. And the projected annual taxable value increase is about 1.5%. That was verified, or created with Julie when she was the assessor, and we verified that with Molly. It's important to note that any of the current taxes that are being paid on any of these privately-owned parcels are not subject to capture. privately owned parcels are not subject to capture. Those taxes right now, a portion of it goes to the city and the rest of it goes to the DDA because it is in the downtown development district. But those are not going to be captured by the BRA, only the incremental taxes beyond the value of that. The projected tax increments available for capture when it's fully built out would be about 3.3 million, however, it would exclude any capture of school or other debt millages. It's important also to note the difference between the Brownfield and the DDA TIF capture. If this project goes through as anticipated, the DDA isn't going to be losing any money because they're going to keep what they're capturing right now. And same way with the city portion, it's the incremental captures that'll go to the BRA. And without the development, there isn't any increment because it's going to sit there in the state that it is. The other really important thing on this slide is the ratio of the taxes that are going to be captured. The largest chunk of it are state taxes, which would be the school taxes that would be going towards us. And the state reimburses the school for the loss of those taxes, so it really doesn't harm the schools, it's more the state that's partnering, that's part of the state's contribution, so to speak, to the project. City taxes would be about a third and others' taxes would be about 25%. And again, this was all approved in the Brownfield Plan. And the projected tax increments without the project, again, would be zero because there's not going to be any development without that. Okay, the next thing we'd like to talk about is the Brownfield TIF capture, which also needs to be approved by the MEDC and the DEQ. So the Brownfield tax increments, we need to submit, the developer and the BRA need to submit an Act 381 work plan, which is in progress. And that's in order to get the state to approve the state TIF capture and also approval of the city and developer expenses as laid out on the Brownfield Plan. City BRA approval as well and MEDC and MDEQ approval. So that's coming very soon, I think that work plan is just about done. Blight elimination grant is the next piece of the financing, it's a very important piece and that's done through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. This grant application to the MEDC for the first blight grant is for River Park Place and that was submitted by the city in January of 15 in the amount of about $670,000. The anticipated award of that would be in February 2016 and once that's awarded, then there would need to be agreements that would need to be approved between the MEDC and the city and the city and the developer. And we have those and we've looked at them and we're working through those, but the MEDC really doesn't allow very many changes to those, it's more of a formality. But they anticipate that that will be awarded, which is a very important piece of the financing for the project. And then later, there would be a grant application to the MEDC for a blight grant for the North Channel Outlet. We're anticipating that would be submitted by the city sometime in April at an amount yet to be determined and then the anticipated award would be in the fall of 16. And again, you'd have agreements that council would have to approve between the city and the MEDC and the city and the developer for the particular grant. The next piece of the puzzle is the rental rehabilitation grant through Mishka. That would be for the North Channel Outlet, so really phase two of the development. It would be for the second and third floors in an approximate amount of 300,000. It would go towards affordable apartments from between eight to 14 and it would be submitted by the city in approximately June of this upcoming year, of this year of 2016. Probably the award for that particular grant would be in the winter. And again, there'd be agreements that would have to be approved between the city and Mishka and the city and the developer. The next piece of this development puzzle would be historic rehabilitation tax credits through the state Historic Preservation Office and the federal government. This is one that the city really doesn't get involved with, but it's a piece of the developer's financing and I thought we'd mention it. It'd be only applicable to the North Channel Outlet building, up to 20% of qualified construction expenses. There was a facade designed by Shippel through the DDA in October of 14, which we'll see a picture of here in a little bit. And there's been a request submitted to Shippel by the developer, that'll happen probably in May. If, if project continues on, the facade improvements would have to be approved by the city Historic District Commission and this would need to be reviewed by Shippel and the US Park Service for anticipated approval in the winter of 16 and 17. This is a conceptual facade done by the state Historic Preservation Office of the North Channel Outlet Building. So you can see it really is adhering to what the building looks like, just making it more modern to meet the standards of the glass and what have you, but maintaining that historical look. Next piece of the puzzle would be an OPRAC tax abatement. OPRAC stands for Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, have to be approved by council and MEDC. That was Public Act 146 of 2000, it's been a very valuable tool for development across the state particularly, you know, in areas that are depressed and probably wouldn't have an ability to redevelop a certain parcel without some of these tax incentives. Although this particular tax abatement is applicable to both buildings, it's only going to be applying for the North Channel Outlet. And it only applies to future increases in taxes on real property, the building, not to the land value. The city BRA continues to capture real estate taxes and the abatement would be available for up to 15 years, but in the proposal would be asking for 10 years. And again, this is an important piece of the financing for this whole project. It would require approval by the council and the state and anticipated to be in front of council in July. The next item would be the development agreement between the city and the BRA and the council, a three-party agreement and the developer as well. And we've been spending a large amount of time negotiating this development agreement and working through it with the developer and the different attorneys and we're getting really close. So it's a very complex agreement, but it has to be because it's a complex project. Again, as I mentioned, it's a three-party agreement between the BRA, which is really the enabling entity in the lynchpin in this because it's their Brownfield Plan and they're the only entity that can capture the taxes and then reimburse. And so they have to be part of the agreement as well as the city, who's going to be doing the public development and the owner who's going to be doing the private development work. The components of the agreement are what is the private developer's responsibility to redevelop the buildings and what is the city's responsibility to construct the public infrastructure? How is the BRA capturing the TIF and reimbursing the eligible costs, how does that get handled? What's the city going to assist in the approval of the OPRAC tax abatement? And also the city applying for the various grants that are necessary for the project as well as a host of other items, you know, areas that need to be addressed in terms of indemnification and things like that. That agreement, we're hoping, can be in front of council at the second meeting in February. That's the plan right now. Another piece in the puzzle are the permits and approvals, city planning and zoning, historic district and the state. So just kind of an idea of some of the timing on these approvals, the development agreement, we're looking at February of 16. The Act 381 work plan would be in March of 2016, requires BRA and the state approval. The River Park Place Site Plan, PUD, in March of 16. The facade revisions would be in front of the Historic District Commission in February of 16. Blight elimination grant awarded hopefully by the MEDC in February of 16. Those agreements, which I mentioned, in order to be able to take advantage of that blight grant would be in March of 16. And then the OPRAC tax abatement, hopefully in July of 16. There are similar permits and approvals needed for the North Channel Outlet, which is really phase two of the development and that's expected to start a summer of 16. Last piece of this puzzle is the construction. Taking a long time to get there, right? There's a lot of pieces that have to get together. So this is a rough estimate of the timing of the various constructions. So blight elimination activities could happen as early as March, once that grant is approved and funds are available. And that's really important to get that building buttoned up and start to be able to do the real renovation inside of it. Infrastructure Phase One, combination of both city and private, starting in May, that would be the water main loop, the short street retaining wall and the curb cuts that are necessary. Well, that's not, that's not in phase one, but we'll get there. The River Park Place construction, private, would start in April and that's going to be done by a local contractor, Orshol Construction, they've done a lot of work in the area. The North Channel Outlet blight elimination, what happened in, you know, we've done by the private developer in the winter of 16, 17. Infrastructure Phase Two, per the agreement, and that infrastructure phase two is the sewer, doesn't need to be done until spring of 17, but it's going to be done sooner than that. So we'll more than meet that deadline, but I'm just laying out what's going to be, you're going to see in the development agreement. So a lot, most of the city infrastructure work will be done here within another year if this all goes through. North Channel Outlet construction, commercial phase, spring of 17 and the residential phase, probably summer of 17. Infrastructure Phase Three, which would be the Riverwalk and the Memorial Street resurfacing, we're still working on the timing of that. It's going to largely hinge on the availability of tax increment financing revenues to reimburse us on that, but we may have to accelerate that a little bit to help with the sale of the units and make sure that the project is viable. Some of the benefits of this proposed redevelopment, obviously it removes a hugely visible blighted building, it's a real blot on the, on the community and it's been for quite some time. It, it addresses some security concerns because the police are routinely called to those buildings to kick people out, so that'll be nice to get rid of that. It's going to create 35 condominiums and year-round market rate and rent-controlled apartments, which is really good for the downtown area, it's right there, people can walk to the local businesses, they can go to the boat, they can catch a bite to eat. Though it should entice new residents and others to visit downtown, to take advantage of everything our downtown has to offer. It should provide a catalyst, we think, not only for the city as a whole, but particularly for the North Washington Corridor, which there's been several proposals to start developing down that way and this should, I think, really help that. It'll generate about an 8-fold tax base increase and the public infrastructure improvements would be funded by tax increment financing, which is generated by the privately redeveloped property, so that's a win for the city and the city residents. This picture here is what used to be at that site. This was the Manistee Manufacturing. Starting from the left, that building is gone and that's where the River Park Place building sits right now, as well as the parking lot between the two buildings. As you move over to the right, you see the first building with the smaller windows, the top floor of that is gone, but the bottom two floors are still existing. And then you've got, the next four big windows are there and that's what we know as the North Channel Outlet and everything to the, to the north of that is gone and that's a, it's just a lot right now. In fact, the wall between those two buildings is still standing if you look at the North Channel Outlet on the north side, so that's a kind of a neat historical picture. This is a rendering of what the project might look like. It's changed a little bit from that, the docks can't go in that direction because of the shipping channel, but there'll certainly be some docks there. And again, just another, another look of this project. That was a kind of a fast run-through of what we presented to council, you know, a while back. Like I said, there's a lot of pieces to this project and it's kind of like the floodgates have opened because things are starting to come in place and they're hitting the ground running. So there's going to be a lot of information coming back to council for various approvals for the project, but we wanted to give council an update of where we were at, let them know what was coming and just ask any questions that they might have at this point before they start to see some of this stuff on their agendas.
I have a question. On the projected taxable value, the evaluation of 2.2 million. I took a look at the current taxable values of these parcels today, 351,100 and then you're right, it's about 20,715 in taxes. At what point are they projecting it to reach this over $2 million taxable value? Do they have the completion of the project or is it...
No, it's when everything is built out. So it'll be two to three years out because it's phase, they're going to work on River Park Place first and then they're going to work on the North Channel Outlet, commercial parts and then the residential parts. So it'll be a number of years before it goes out and it's all laid out in the Brownfield Plan that was approved as to kind of when that should happen.
Yeah, I, I have a copy of that, I got it from the October 21st, 2014 minutes. And that's where it says, "Construction start, fall 2014."
Well, it's taken, it's taken a longer time, but in the development agreement that'll be coming back to council, there's definitive timelines as to when that work will happen.
So because of added value, we're going to, we're going to be able to incrementally bump the taxable values up of these properties because obviously at one and a half percent, you're never going to get, it's going to be a long time before you get to 2.2 million for taxable value.
Clearly, that's, that's the growth rate after they're, after they're built out and they've, and they've been adjusted by the assessor to take into consideration all the work that's been done.
Do they have a timeline that they can give us as to when they're going to hit those benchmarks so that we know how much revenue that's, we're not really going to anticipate getting?
Again, they've got a timeline laid out as to when they're going to finish their construction if everything goes according to plan. And so once that, all the construction work is finished and those get put on the taxable, the taxable value will be there. Now there'll be a tax abatement for North Channel Outlet in theory, so they're not going to reap the benefits of all of those, but that's all built into those TIF tables that was approved in the Brownfield Plan.
Okay, on the abatements. If I go back and look at the plan from 2014 and there's a seven-year abatement on the condos and a 10-year abatement on the North Channel.
The seven, the seven-year abatement that was anticipated in that plan, the developer's going to forego through negotiations and as the project has developed, and the reason for that is they're going to be financing the construction of the short street retaining wall, so they're going to forego that NEZ tax abatement in order to be able to capture the taxes earlier to help finance the repayment of that wall. So the only tax abatement that we'd be looking at for this project would be the OPRAC abatement for the North Channel Outlet and that would amount to a little over $200,000 over the whole life of the abatement.
Because, you know, I see a lot of pieces still need to come together and there's grants that have not yet been applied for. What happens if we don't get these grants once we start?
Well, that's a fair question. I mean, the, it's important to note that the developer has a lot of assurances from the MEDC that the first blight grant is going to be granted. So the risk to the city frankly is, is very minimal and that's what the development agreement for is structured for. And the reason that it's minimal is because we've already procured financing for the largest portion of the public infrastructure, the sewer bank, Riverbank replacement and pump station, which we had to do regardless of whether this development gets done, but it is also needed to support this development because of the way the pipes are. So that, even if we didn't get any TIF revenue, if this thing totally blew up, you know, there's no risk there. The only, the only public infrastructure cost that the city's going to be putting out is looping the water main and doing some curb cuts, which are a pretty minimal cost. And then eventually we'll be doing Memorial Drive resurfacing likely and extension of the Riverwalk there. And those, the way it's shaping out in the development agreement, will be done several years out and we'll have tax increment finances to pay for, for that, most of that upfront and then the rest of it as time goes on. But if the development doesn't get built, then we won't be obligated to do those. So there's really very little risk on the city, that's the whole purpose of the development agreement, but there is the spirit of partnership with the developer.
Okay. And we've got two facilities, one, the condo in the other, Jocelyn Cove, that were permitted and started and never got finished. What assurance do we have this is going to be finished?
Well, I think you've got a number of things there. You've got developers that have a lot of skin in the game and they've got, you know, they've got bank agreements and lending commitments that probably have teeth in them as well, although I haven't seen those. And I believe that the developers have told the city that they're going to, after they've paid off the loans for the first, the first part of the construction, are going to turn any of those proceeds back in to be able to do North Channel Outlet. The developer is very anxious to get this property built, get them sold and move on. It's taken a long time, the development is probably a little more costly, a little more involved than maybe they had originally anticipated, but they really want to see it through to completion. Frankly, they said, you know, they're sorry it's taken this long and they're somewhat embarrassed that it's, it's been this long, but it's, it's complicated as you can see and they've got to put all the pieces together. And I guess, I guess the bottom line is, I mean, I don't know that there's any, any developer can assure you that they're going to, that they're going to be able to finish something, a lot of it depends on market conditions, but I think the development agreement gives the city as, as much protection as you can expect.
When we did the water and sewer bond last year, 1.6 million dollars of that was for the River Street Sewer Line. Is that, that was originally part of this program. Is that, that was originally part of this program when it was first presented, October of two thousand and fourteen, is that correct?
The, the Riverbank Sewer and the Sixth Avenue Pump Station were anticipated to be part of the TIF recapture from the Brownfield Plan, correct?
So we've already bonded for that and have the resources available for that part of the project?
That's correct.
But that had to be done anyways, correct?
We, we needed to do that, we had to do that. We couldn't rely on thirty years of TIF financing that may or may not happen to do that project. We had to finance it a different way.
Now, my other question is that the, some of the attachments would indicate that during this period of time, the tax increment capture for schools would be like 1.33 million dollars. Now, are you saying that's fully reimbursable by the state?
That's my understanding of it. When they grant the school tax capture, which isn't automatic, then the state reimburses the school districts through their funding formula.
And is there any local reimbursement?
No.
So...
Except for, except for, except for the 2.5 million dollars of public infrastructure that's being built. So if you look at it, of the, of the total TIF capture, the city's getting the vast majority of that for public infrastructure, actually very little, not very little, a small percentage of the project costs are actually going back to the developer. So that's the real benefit here, is the taxes that this project is going to generate are getting captured, and most of that captured taxes is going towards city infrastructure.
Okay. When you talk about the street you're talking about, Memorial Drive, Maple to Thirty-One?
Yes.
The entire link?
Probably starting where MDOT, when they redid the intersection there from that point on. It needs to be reconstructed. You may recall a number of years back, MDOT needed to use that as a detour, and it was in pretty poor condition at that time, but they wouldn't pay to reconstruct it. They did a, I think a mill and filler overlay, and it looked good for a couple of years, and then it totally was back to worse than it was when they did it. And Jeff and I often talk, that's the poster child for the wrong fix in the wrong spot. It wasn't fixed properly, and therefore didn't have the lifespan out of it. But that road does need to be reconstructed in order to be fixed properly.
Okay, someone's going to have to borrow money to do this. Is the city online for that, or is this going to be done through Brownfield?
Borrow money to do Memorial Drive?
Yes.
Okay, Memorial Drive, as I mentioned, is, is, and we're still negotiating that, is going to be out a number of years, so there's a couple of things to keep in mind. One is that's going to make it onto the Transportation Improvement Plan at some point, and we're not going to allow the city to get into a position where we're required to build that until we're out far enough that it's either going to be on the Transportation Improvement Plan naturally, or we've degenerated some TIF revenues to help finance that. So it's, we don't want to be in a position where we're going to be out on a limb having to pay for that without having some resources to do that.
And in the infrastructure that we're talking about, like the sewer and the pump station and all that, we've already got the bond money for that, so...
That's correct.
We're set there. Is there any other anticipated upfront cost to the city?
Yeah, so let's talk about each of the components of the public infrastructure. So we've got bond money for the Riverbank Sewer and the lift station. The curb cuts and the water main looping aren't a big piece of that, and those will come out of, like the water main looping would come out of the water and sewer fund and get reimbursed over time, so that's not a financing or a cash flow issue. The short-street retaining wall was a big unknown, and it was, the costs are estimated probably at about 250,000, and we didn't have money to do that, and so that was a negotiation between the city and the developer that the developer, because it was critical for that piece of it to get done, in order for the rest of the development to get built, that they would actually build that and seek financing for it. However, it would be secured by tax increment financing reimbursement, that the city would not get in, it would go to the developer to build that piece of public infrastructure. The Memorial Drive, the streetscapes that could happen out on that corner, and the Riverwalk are things that are going to happen down the road, and the estimated cost, although it hasn't been updated recently, for the Riverwalk improvements that are above and beyond what's going to happen when they reconstruct the sewers, is about 115,000 dollars. So we need to make sure in the development agreement that that's out far enough so we have time to plan to be able to finance that. However, to the extent that that might be integral to the sales of some of those River Park Place units, we may have to slide that back a little bit earlier, but we need to be able to make sure that we've identified financing sources for that. And ultimately, keep in mind, all of this will get reimbursed through TIF down the road if the project gets built up.
Okay, the Riverwalk, is, is that going to be public accessible, or is that only going to be accessible to the government?
No, it's, it's, we have one public easement, it's a public Riverwalk, we will get another public easement over the parcel that they acquired next to theirs that we don't have yet, that'll be part of the development agreement, but the intent is for that to be public.
And you know how they're going to shore up that Short Street?
Spicer's doing the design on that right now, and I don't know that they've reached a conclusion yet.
Yeah, we talked about it a little bit. Some of the, the unique issues on Short Street are that the street as constructed today is actually encroaching on the developer's property. So pavement is actually on the developer's property, and so we've been able to negotiate that. In order to keep that road in its current position, we need to stabilize it and build a wall to keep it there. By building the wall, creates more space to allow for parking and such down below, but there's been a lot of back and forth on that. We have these city engineers looking at several different options, and what is likely, or what is kind of evolving into these, the most cost-effective option is to use the large segmental blocks. They're called gravity wall blocks. They're still working with different manufacturers on what the different, you know, what type it would actually be, but this would be a stacked, stacked block wall, and it's about 20-foot of elevation difference between the proposed parking area and Short Street at the highest point.
Those blocks are probably the same style or size that you used on First Street Beach by the way.
A similar product to that. There's different manufacturers that, we're right at that edge of where the walls don't work anymore at that 20-foot, so we're working with, or the Spicer's looking with different manufacturers to find the most appropriate one, and then once you find the style, then the facing of it, you know, there's different options on that.
Thank you.
I am, I won't take it this long.
I've got one more. What sort of obligation will the city be incurring for this?
What sort of obligation?
Financial obligation.
Well, we would, we would, to the, we would need to build the public infrastructure, which is that 2.5 million, which is fully reimbursed by TIF financing, and the vast majority of that has already been bonded for. So the additional expense, the items that we don't have an identified financing source for right now are out far enough that we'll be able, that we'll be able to work that into budgets and/or have TIF funds available, depending on how fast those come in, to do that. And that was something that we really worked hard on in the development agreement that you'll see, is to really minimize the city's financial risk.
I have a question, two questions. Has there a master plan or master deed been drawn up to the condos yet?
I don't believe it has.
Now, we're talking about thirty-five condo units. Now, the taxes that are generating, the property taxes that are generated from that, where are they going to go?
Even when, even when it's...
Are they not going into TIF recapture, or they are?
Yes, they do. Even once it's condominiumized, it's the property itself, whether or not it's single ownership or condominiumized. And keep in mind, this, if this, if this development happened with no city involvement, the city wouldn't see a dime of any of those increased taxes because it's in the DDA. So the DDA, the DDA forgot for when, forgone their tax capture. They had to approve it as well. So even if this development happened, the city wouldn't see any of that, it would all go to the DDA, and the DDA gave that up, and the city's going to be able to capture 2.5 million dollars worth of taxes to do public infrastructure.
Any other questions? Appreciate the update. It's nice to know that this project is still going forward. I know it generated a lot of excitement and buzz, and I'm glad to see that they're still willing to come here and complete that project.
And John Ruth Heiss, one of the owners, would have liked to have been here, but again, just with the weather and travel conditions, he felt it prudent to stay back, so, thank you.
Thanks. Next is discussion on the strategic plan and update process. Does anybody want a five-minute break before we start that? All right, proceed.
Hi, I'm Betsy Evans with the Alliance for Economic Success, and our two topics tonight that we want to discuss are, first of all, revisiting, revisiting the strategic plan update that was begun in last year and has never been completed, so we want to talk about the process that you would like to undergo to do that strategic plan update. And then the second topic is to talk about developing some expectations and perhaps some performance measures for the new city manager. So to do that, I brought in John Iacangeli with Beckett and Rader, he's a consultant that we work with regularly, to help facilitate that, these discussions.
Mayor and City Commissioner, it's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I really did enjoy the last two presentations, they were pretty informative on what's going on. I noticed in your council packet, specifically on page six, which you have a copy of the strategic plan, you have the, your six strategic goals, and two of the projects that you've seen tonight fit really into that strategic plan. One is public infrastructure, which is the partnership between the city and Filer Township, and as well, the project that was just presented in terms of how it's going to enhance the city infrastructure, and it's also economic development related. The other thing that I noticed on your web when I was getting ready for the meeting was the 2015 annual report that was prepared, and what I thought was really interesting was that projects that were connected with the strategic plan, the strategic plan reference numbers were put next to the project, so you had some integration and relationship between what the city administration and what you're doing relative to the strategic plan. And I think the purpose that we wanted to be here this evening was, strategic plans are very important, and obviously you've taken the steps to start developing it, and you're utilizing it. We wanted to talk to you about a process of maybe spending a little bit more time in terms of revising the current plan, and then talking to you, as Betsy had mentioned, about how you can use that plan and integrate it into a formal evaluation process with the city manager. Okay? The short-term proposal is basically to continue a process for a quick update of your strategic plan. We think that that would probably take a two-hour session, and I think, based on a conversation that Tim and I had with, with, Betsy and I had with Tim Irvin, Tim says that usually is a couple of hours, and that the city commission kind of dedicates that time to really working through and going through it, and deleting things that you think are no longer appropriate and adding things that you think really need to be stressed. So let's think about, not tonight, but maybe in the future, of having a meeting where Betsy and I, and if Tim is back, Tim would be available to work with you as well on that. We would like you during that time to revisit your, your, your vision and your mission statement. I noticed that has appeared in other materials that the city has published, so you are starting to use that vision and mission statement and other types of documentation that you're using, and then develop a common agenda that really addresses all of the various city interests. These are your current areas of focus that you have in your strategic plan and in your annual report, and they include economic development and jobs, city administrator, infrastructure facilities, beaches, parks, and recreation areas, financial stability and continuous improvements, intergovernmental relationships, and then housing for overall housing, homeless issues, and senior citizens. And you can see that, just on the two proposals that you talked about this evening, those two proposals fit into two or three of those categories. So, you know, that, that's a really positive thing when your strategic plan really starts addressing a lot of your projects and your programs. When city managers are typically evaluated, there's a variety of techniques. When we, in getting ready for this evening, I went online and I looked up city manager evaluations that are used all over the country, that are, that are provided by the international, the ICMA, Michigan Municipal League Library, but a lot, but a lot of them are very subjective, okay? And here's an example on the slide of some of the evaluations that I found, how city commissions evaluate city managers. Like a question, rate the effectiveness of the city manager's communication with city council. Very subjective, okay? Somebody, one of you may think it's very appropriate and very effective that the city manager may send you a weekly email or give you an update at the city commission meeting. Somebody else may think that effective communication is stopping in the city manager's office every day or a couple times a week and sitting down, I mean, face to face. So what happens with these evaluations, they don't really take a look at what the manager is doing, but they take more, it's more or less, the person filling out the evaluation, it's their personal subjective ideas of how they think they should be evaluating the city manager. Another question I found was, does the city manager make sound decisions and exhibit good judgment? Very, very subjective. Does the city manager maintain a positive and productive working relationship with city council members? I mean, these are good questions, but when you really think about you're evaluating your chief administrator, there's really no built-in performance measures, okay? So that's something that you need to take a look at, and one of the things that we suggest is you move away from the subjective and personalized evaluation that many communities use, and go to a performance-based evaluation, which is really based on specific city initiatives, and in this case, a direct linkage to your strategic plan. Okay, so you've got it all set up, really. You've got a strategic plan, you've identified some key projects and programs and initiatives that you want to follow. Why not build in the measures to evaluate the manager so the manager knows how to spend his time and resources and staff? So you can develop the performance measures by looking at some key indicators towards some highly strategic goals that you have, okay? An example would have been, obviously, the North Channel property and the River Park Place have been sitting there, and they've been there for a number of years, and maybe that is a strategic initiative of the city, is basically to work through that and get that property redeveloped. That could be a measure that's tied back to the city manager's evaluation in terms of haunchling that project in the future. That's an example. Another one is looking forward to, with the completion of activities and developing a measure for that, okay? So let's say strategically, since these projects are pretty much already, already in the talking stage or even into the agreement, you're already writing agreements for them, I'll use them as an example. Let's say several years down the road, you're thinking about forming a partnership with Filer Township on providing infrastructure. You're currently doing it, but let's say that that is something in your strategic plan. That would be a performance measure that could be used to evaluate the city manager in terms of the progress being made towards that strategic outcome, okay? So that's, that's kind of where this process is going. Here's some examples that you can measure by. Let's say strategically, I think in your strategic plan, you have stuff about financial stability. Maybe one of the measures is by the end of fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, you would like to increase the general fund balance by one or two percent. That's something that's measurable, okay? Another measurement would be, by a certain date, complete an actuarial study to determine the state of the retirement pension or other post-employment benefits, okay? That can be measured, because the study would be completed, if it was completed, it's measurable, it's evaluated. So there are things that we can set up as part of the evaluation system that really fall back on and come from your strategic plan. So that's why this is kind of, there's two parts on the agenda. One is the updated strategic plan, the second part is the evaluation proposal or the way to develop performance measures for the city manager in terms of evaluation. So it all runs together, okay? Updating the strategic plan, assigning key high priorities to the city manager, and then developing what those measure, those measurements would be in order to do a fair evaluation and assessment. So those are, these are some more hypothetical examples that we came up with that were, that could, could come out of the strategic plan as sooner to lead role with the city, for the city in the Thirty-One Corridor Strategy with the neighboring townships and the Little River Ban, in terms of looking at the US Thirty-One Corridor through Filer, Manistee Township and with tribal involvement, as an economic development strategy. It's something that could be measurable, there could be some outcomes and evaluation based on that. So these are the, your areas of focus, and one of the things that we wanted to at least explore with you quickly this evening, we don't want to make it a long night, are these six areas still your top priorities strategically? Or have some of them dropped off, or do you have any other ones in mind that you want to add that would be one of the initial discussion items? Still good to go on these?
I think so. Anyone else have any other?
Do you like this, uh, should I, do you like this concept that we've come up with relative to linking the strategic plan in with performance measurements and evaluation technique?
I do.
Do you like, I mean, any, any questions in that area? Would, one approach would be, uh, to kind of take it offline would be one of the things that we talked about internally. Would there be a willingness from maybe three of the commission to form like a subcommittee to work with us and the manager on developing what those measures would be, in order to come back to you with, with a, kind of a program for it? Is there interest on doing that?
With the strategic plan, we'd have to go through that first?
Yeah.
And then...
We'd have to go through that first, and then have, then, based on that, have a committee that would get together and say, okay...
Based on what we've come up with?
Yes, let, let's pull together some performance measures. Instead of doing it overall, maybe just have a working committee that meets a couple of times and really kind of puts a draft together so everybody can take a look at it.
I like the concept of the performance-based evaluation. I just, you know, it's one of those things that, uh, those measurements have to be, uh, attainable. I mean, because some of those things, um, some of your examples could be completely out of control.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they have to be attainable.
You know, it's, it's hard to say, you know, you didn't raise the general fund by 1%, what, what, how can I say, we're gonna see, you know, uh, I, yeah, that's, it's gotta be within their control to, to effectuate change or to, to move towards that. So, um, those developments have to have a lot of thought and a lot of, uh...
Well, that's why we're suggesting a committee of three on council, the city manager, representatives from AES, to really sit down and strategize and put those together. But they would be reflective of your strategic plan that you would, that you would go through. You either reaffirm what you already have, or you add or delete, and really, that's the process. It's not throwing it out and starting over. It's just sitting down for a couple of hours, going through it, say, I think we've already done this, we need to add this, let's revise this one. And then, based on that, then we can move into more of a working committee in order to develop what its performance measures would be. But I do agree, they have to be attainable and doable. They can't be things that are really set up for failure. They have to be things that are achievable and incremental in terms of...
Realistic, attainable, measurable.
Correct.
And I, you know, I look at our strategic plan, and I see some things that don't fit any of those criteria, but they're listed as goals. Uh, have the best beaches in Michigan. But how do you measure that?
Well, that's the...
How do you attain that?
That's, I think that's the reason why we need to sit down for a couple of hours with, with, with you folks and go through these line by line, and figure out which ones make sense, which ones don't, and if there's things that have to be added to it. But it's good to do this, at least once or every other year. And I think the track that you're on, because I've seen it kind of integrated now into some of your other materials, it really makes sense to bump it, bump it into the evaluation process, so...
I don't see anything on here that speaks to evaluating the city manager on his management of the staff, the different departments. So, where would that fall?
That would be integrated into your strategic plan, is a, is an area that maybe is, is missing at this point in time.
Well, I don't, I, I believe it's two separate, our strategic plan for the city and our performance evaluation of the city.
Well, that, that is separate.
Those are two separate.
But, but...
Okay, I'm getting confused here, because he's talking about using the strategic plan as a way of a...
Well, there's the goals, you have a strategic plan, and each one of them have, like, a generalized, having the best beaches, but within that goal, you're gonna have specific, attainable, reachable...
Specific, attainable.
Goals, and from those goals, we look at what really should our city manager be focusing on with those goals within our strategic plan. Yes, because we want the best beaches in the state of Michigan, but then we'll have specific goals, like building a new beach house or putting in a new park.
Keeping it clean.
You know, those would be the goals for that particular objective. And then, what part of those goals do we really want to focus on and make part of our city manager's performance?
So, you start with strategic plan, and then you move into the very specific issues?
What's really important for us to achieve.
Which is really important to achieve.
And going back to Mayor Proton's statement, as far as attainable, I think sitting down six months after we've said that, we're looking at that, are those still good objectives? Has something happened to prevent, do we need to change those goals? Have, you know, just doing, you know, six months into it, just having us sit down reviewing, are these still objectives?
So, we would like, you know, just to summarize, the process would be, at some point, relatively in the near term, we would like to have at least a two-hour, two-hour meeting with you to go over in detail the strategic plan that's on paper, and then make the revisions to that, and then afterwards, have a working committee that comes up with the performance measures that would be part of the evaluation process. Okay?
Is that...
And hopefully, we can kind of do this in a three-month timeframe.
Yeah, strategically, the strategic plan updates should be in line and, and vetted out before the next budgeting process.
Yep. Yeah, because your strategic plan would be used for your fiscal budget, for your capital improvements, your traffic improvement program, that, all these things tie together, parks and recreation, a variety of different programs.
Yep.
So, we are available. We will coordinate through the city manager's office, uh, on the work session, okay? And, uh, we, like I said, plan on at least an hour and a half to two hours. And the initial homework that you would have would be reviewing your current plan and coming with the, uh, coming with ideas relative for deletions, revisions, additions to them. And then, we'll help facilitate that.
Now, if we do have a work session in February, is that still give enough time to provide input for the budget?
We're gonna talk to AES and see what kind of turnaround they can have with it, but I had a talk that is critical that we have that in advance of the budget.
Right, it was, pretty much, yeah, what, what's a drop dead date? I mean, I know sooner the better, but... Is February work session gonna be soon enough in February? Or is it something we need to be looking at?
We schedule a special meeting for it.
Unless there's some real wholesale changes on the strategic plan, I think that's probably fine. But we always have the option of doing a session after a regular council meeting for the agenda as well.
We've, we've added work session.
And we've added work sessions, so...
But we could, we could...
But if February is, if February work session's gonna be soon enough?
I, I think it would be, as long as we can get good progress and get that back, get them back around.
And if everyone does their homework?
Everybody does their homework, AES is ready to jump in, so it's just kind of coming up with the date that you can carve out some time to work with.
So, we'll take a look at what we might need to put on a work session in February. There's a lot of things that needs to come before the council, so we'll schedule a special session.
Okay.
So, I'll go through that with discussion.
I'm sorry.
I have a question. Um, why couldn't we put the Ramsdale on this? Areas of focus? It seems like...
It's the structure of facilities, so...
Is that where it's gonna fit?
Yeah, I can look at the depth of the, uh, the, the plan, be a per dust off, specifically about the Ramsdale.
Okay.
Are these in order of importance?
Yeah.
No?
And I, if I could interject, and I know you started working with Tamra about that, and she had said that there's, you know, there are a couple of different ways, and, and obviously, this timeframe is more of a, let's, let's review, are we on target? What do we need to add and delete? If you wanted to do, once, once we get this and we get the, for this budget period, you know, maybe we begin then again in the summer, if we wanted to get more stakeholder input, if we wanted to, uh, do a, a deeper dive into the strategic plan and really do, uh, what was it, a more comprehensive review of that and development of that, you know, we could do that, so that, you know, we're not trying to cram it all in and be done in, in six weeks. But again, begin again in September, get some more input, some more stakeholder input, so that by spring of 2017, we have a really comprehensive and sound strategic plan, so...
About that strategic plan, that's where we draw our evaluation?
Yes. Well, and obviously, we, we, you don't want to wait till spring of 2017 before we start doing that. So, that's why I say, I think initially, we can at least just review, what, what do we already have in the strategic plan, what is missing? Where do we know we want our areas of focus to be? And then, if we wanted to do a, a broader approach and get some more stakeholder input, some more community input, I know Tamra did some, uh, some surveys, uh, when she started this a year ago, and I think there were only, I think, 14 or 15 respondents. So, if we wanted to do, you know, get more public input, or do more stakeholders, or a, a more comprehensive approach, I'm saying we can do that, but we could start that, say, this summer, if we wanted to have that in, completed for 2017.
Just one, I'm just reminding council that if we go through the street visitors in September or someplace, our budget will already be set, so we're gonna have to be careful when we modify whatever's in our budget if things change.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the process? Oh, it sounds good.
Well, um, no, just there, I will be in Mexico.
Well, there are, could we just, the strategic planning down there?
But as you said, you'll have handouts in some form, you could probably have your, like, writing up.
All set?
I think so.
Thanks a lot, Mayor Commission.
Um, I guess that takes us as two items. Um, is there any public comments over each one?